You're not gonna believe what I'm saying.
This is Edward Cologie, am I logged into someone?
Mr. Cologie, you are here, this is the clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cologie, it's my understanding that they have appointed Ms. Carter as an acting deputy clerk by some action.
I explained my position that if the clerk is here ready, willing and able to do job, he should be allowed to do that.
Yeah, it's absolutely legal, it's untenable, and Mr. Bridges repeatedly told me to shut up, which is on tape.
As I said before, we have someone prepared here to serve as an acting deputy, acting deputy clerk, to the extent you were not available.
Probably not the best time to be going back and forth with us, why don't we just let the meeting continue under the clerk, which, you know, and we'll see where we go, but hopefully everything will be fine.
Incoming video is blocked.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a call to order for the special city council meeting called by the mayor, Friday, December thirty-fourth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M. The appointed hour has arrived, I cannot read the open public meeting statement because I cannot see it on the screen there, but it is actually the incorrect open public meeting statement. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is unable to be advertised in a timely fashion, the advertising was sent out to the Trenton Times on December twenty-ninth. Unfortunately, that was not in time for the advertising deadline to allow the item to be published, therefore, the city council is proceeding without a proper open public meetings notice statement, and without proper open public meeting notice to the public. However, the council believes that matters here are emergent enough to proceed in light of an open public meeting statement. I will be asking the legislative council to ask for a vote to proceed at that point in time. The call to order has been made at five thirty P M, I will call the roll, Mr. Blakely. Mr. Blakely is absent, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
No one found the call.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson is absent, Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Harrison is present, Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Michelle is present, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is absent, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent, Council President McBride.
I'm looking for my earplugs then.
Council President McBride is absent. Ladies and gentlemen, we do not at this time have a quorum, I will make a quorum call in fifteen minutes, per the rules of procedure. We do not have a quorum at that point, the meeting will have a future. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I will see you forty-five P M.
We need four, there's only two, they're giving another fifteen minutes for the other two to get on.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't know if I was able to hear me.
Yes, sir, we're waiting for the quorum of the council, I made quorum call at five thirty, I'll make another quorum call at five forty-five. Yes, sir, your presence has been done. How long we have three members of the council, that is still not a quorum, we'll wait for a quorum of the council to arrive, if by six P M. the council does not arrive. Under section B of the rules of procedure, the council should no quorum attend within thirty minutes of the hour appointed. Then the council president or in his or her absence, the clerk or his designated name may thereupon adjourn the meeting until the next day. Unless by unanimous agreement, those members present, presidents, act another hour a day, the names of the members present and their actions at such meeting shall be recorded in the minutes by the clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, we will wait for a quorum of the council, thank you. Mr. Cologie, also to note for the record, the open public meeting notice as published by the mayor does not contain the statement formal action will be taken. It says instead that the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the attached law. I do not believe that is indicative notice of formal action, please note my objection for the proceeding. We did not notify the public that formal action would actually be taken at this point. Also to note for the record, Mr. Cologie, I also would like to note my objection, I asked the administration to use the normal open public meeting link that we use for all regular meetings, that was refused for some reason. So just to note that for the record, my objection to proceed in violation of the open public meetings act, thank you. Mr. Cologie, if possible, I'd also like a specific advisement on the ordinance, the ordinance has, it would be a fatal flaw, it hasn't been properly advertised at all. That's, that's a big problem.
I could talk about some other big problems, let's just get to this, this meeting, wait till someone.
The chairman is commenting, sir, sir, I'm the. Yeah, at this point in time, you know, this is Tom, Tom, sir, please don't attack me.
No one's attacking you, I didn't say anything about you personally.
No, you are, that's, that's not a proper statement, sir, please, please make any rules.
Listen, let's not talk about proper statements, I'm sick of this. You're, you're giving all of this commentary and I don't want to hear it.
No, sir, no direction for the record, actually, and it is actually proper whether you would hear it or not. Okay, I'm sorry, you are not in charge of this meeting at this point, sir.
Well, you know what, we'll, we'll see about that.
Mr. Rivera, will you please stop muting me, I am the chairman of this meeting until such time as the council president and vice president arrive, or a quorum arrives.
I'm not muting you, sir, so.
Rivera's muting me, I would appreciate if you didn't stop.
How about you mute yourself, how about that?
Mr. Blakely. You seem upset.
I, I, if I, if I, if I may interject, please, we do not have a quorum, there is no meeting until such time.
Exactly, so there's no chairman, you're not a chairman of this meeting, there's no meeting until we have a quorum.
Please perform the rules procedure, there, there is actually a presiding officer until such time as a quorum is formed, thank you.
But not a meeting, how, how's there an officer of a meeting that's not constituted? You're just making stuff up, Mr. Conlon.
Sure.
I don't know if you've heard, but you work for us, we don't work for you, you work for us.
I actually work for the people, sir.
You know, no, 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 you work for the city council, you work for the city council.
By you, I do have a dirty duty to serve you as a secretary, but I have also state statutory functions, there's a reason for a municipal clerk.
Can we just please, can we please stop?
There's definitely, there is definitely a need for a city clerk, and I look forward to when we have one.
That's improper, sir, please stop attacking me in the pub, in a public forum.
No one's, no one's attacking you, and you do a good job of attacking yourself.
Attacking directly, sir, I'm, I'm going to ask that you stop.
I'm just telling the truth.
Sir, please stop, please show a little respect and decorum.
Oh, you're, you're talking about respect, wow.
Sir, you called me hit dog hollering in the paper, that, you, you, you make misogynistic statements against women all the time, obliterated crackhead.
Wow, wow, I am shocked, I am shocked, you're talking about misogynistic statements.
Gentlemen, may I please, may I please ask again?
The irony.
The irony. Can I please ask, we chill until?
The irony of what, I have made no misogynistic statements, please, please state for the record, Mr. Blakely, exactly what misogynistic statements I've made.
When we, when we have your hearing, we'll be talking about that.
I'm sure we will. But have the evidence, because I have taken.
Yeah, well, from my understanding, we have evidence.
Now, okay, that's good. Ladies and gentlemen, it's five forty-two P M., I will call the roll to see if we have a quorum, Mr. Blakely.
Present.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson is absent. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Harrison is present, Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle. Come back, Mr. Michelle, he was here before, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is absent, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent, President McBride. Council President McBride is absent, Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle. Ladies and gentlemen, I will make a quorum call again in a couple of minutes, we're still waiting for quorum of the city council, thank you very much.
I'd like to say on the record that the absence of my colleagues on this meeting is absolutely reprehensible. They have a duty to show up.
Order to do their duty.
It's not, I have a right to make a comment, I have a right to make a comment, I have a first amendment right to make a comment, please do not interrupt me, I have a right.
Go down there. During the relevant.
So I have a right, I have a right to speak, I, I have a right to speak, I, listen, sir, 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 you weren't elected to anything, I have a right to say something. Absolutely obscene that they're not here, it's just ridiculous. It is shameful.
Nobody showed up?
They're not here, we don't have a quorum.
Oh, wow, this is crazy.
Absolutely incredible.
This is crazy.
We have to start calling these people out, the fact that they're not here to do their people's bidding is obscene.
You are, you are out of order, sir.
What are you gonna do about it, sue me? The fact that they're not here is just an abdication of their responsibility as elected officials, it's shameful. No one cares what you want to hear.
Councilman Michelle's on the meeting, Councilman Michelle's on a meeting yet to be muted out.
I have no ability to mute anybody.
We have dozens of people. We have dozens of the public waiting for us to start this meeting, and the fact that they have not shown up is shameful.
The meeting was called in violation of the open public meetings act, sir.
It was not called in violation of public meetings act, Mr. Cologie and I will give an opinion with respect to that when the time is right, please allow, please allow the attorneys to do the attorney work.
That's how we got in trouble the last time, acting as an attorney when he's not one.
Sir, that's a slanderous statement, please cease and desist.
You're not an attorney, that's a fact, that's a fact, you're not an attorney, that is a fact.
That's correct.
That's not an opinion, that's not a misstatement, that is a fact.
Why are you attacking me, Mr. Blakely, what is wrong with?
I'm not attacking you, I'm telling a fact.
Purpose for you serving at this point in time by creating a public spectrum?
I'm not attacking you, I'm stating a fact, just because you say something is so, doesn't make it so.
You have said that I have made misogynistic statements, you have attacked me.
Listen, I, I am not, I am not going to get into that.
If I may, Mr. Michelle, Mr. Michelle currently is in charge of this meeting.
I would ask. Benefit of the public, thank you, sir. Please stop attacking me.
I'm not attacking you, I'm not attacking you, not attacking you, I'm telling the truth, you're not an attorney.
That's correct.
I'd ask that you stop giving us legal counsel.
I'm sitting city clerk with a license under the authority of the state of New Jersey, for which I am responsible to administer certain laws and procedures for which I have been trained. Specifically, one of the big ones is the open public meeting act, and I was told by the legislative council and attorney to note my objection for the record, I will follow his advice, not yours.
Okay, gotcha, thank you, thank you, you can be quiet now, we'll call you if we need you.
Please stop attacking me, sir.
Does anybody go do a roll call?
Attacking you, I'm not attacking you.
Gentlemen, let's stop this needless colloquy, why don't we wait until we take another quorum call, and if we have one, great, if we don't have one, then we have to deal with it.
I just want to put on the record, again, the fact that my colleagues are not here is shameful, it is literally. This is outrageous, I don't think Kathy McBride is on the call, I don't think Marge Caldwell-Wilson is on the call, I don't think Robin Vaughn is on the call. I don't think Santiago is on the call, therefore, we don't have a quorum. City employees will not get paid because of their failure to be on this call, they always talk about putting Trenton first, putting the people.
I spoke bronze lines.
No one needs to talk to you, I'm not, this is not a conversation, this is not a dialogue, you're not a member of this council, you're not a member of this council. You're not a member of this council, I do not need you to respond to me.
We're not in a council meeting, can you, so it's open forum.
Again, you work for us, I don't need your response, I don't need your response.
Proof not spread wide.
Not a dialogue, this is a monologue, it's not a dialogue, I don't need you to respond to me.
It's actually improper in total, so.
Anybody have scored Alabama?
Well, you're an expert in improper behavior, does anybody have a score of the Alabama game?
Thank you, David.
What's the Alabama score?
Still seventeen-six.
I like you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the roll again, Mr. Blakely.
I'm here.
Mr. Blakely is present, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson is absent, Mr. Harrison. Can someone please mute the background, it would be greatly appreciated, I can, I can barely discern the voices, Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is absent, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent, Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent, ladies and gentlemen, we will wait ten more minutes, at which time I will call for an adjournment, I will ask the gentleman on the dais at what time they would like to reconvene this special meeting. And we will proceed accordingly, or we will have a quorum and we will proceed with the meeting, thank you.
This is a new law, just an absolute new law in these council proceedings, that they are not here to do their duties. It's just, it's just incredible. We have serious business to do as a city, and the fact that they're not here is just, it's just unbelievable. Unbelievable. And I want to note on the record, the fact that we could definitely have a meeting if a majority of this council decides to have a meeting, in fact, let me ask Mr. Bridges, Mr. Bridges, are you there?
I am, yes.
I want to ask the question for the record relating to Mr. Conlon's point. Can the city member, the majority of city council forum members request an emergency meeting at any time?
Yes, they can, provided that the, you know, the requirements of the act call for it, i.e. that they are emergent situations and that they're limited to discussions on emergent situations, yes, they, yes, they most certainly can. As the mayor can as well, so the, the answer to your question is yes, however, obviously, in order to proceed with the meeting, there still has to be a quorum.
Yeah, so just to say on the record, the fact that at least four of my members cannot get on this call to do the people's business is shameful and a rotten maneuver. They understand that the items on this docket are extraordinarily important, and the fact that they can't be bothered to spend thirty minutes on a call is, is one of the most deplorable actions out of many that this council has undertaken. We have a duty to show up.
Calling this meeting to order are out of order, sir, it is literally my job to call this meeting to order, I can read the provision.
Yeah, I tell you what, I tell you what's out of order, what's out of order, okay, sir.
Sir, please, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the roll again.
There's no meeting.
I appreciate. Okay, so we're gonna call the roll again, and we're gonna, I'm calling the council to order, because it's literally my job, thank you, Mr. Blakely. I'm present, thank you, sir, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson is absent, Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Oh, that's what he was doing, yeah, so they can call each other names and everything, maybe we'll start the meeting, they said they've been arguing.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle.
And I, this is. You go merry when I go merry. So you go merry when I go merry.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle is absent, Mr. Rodriguez. Rodriguez is absent, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn is absent, Council President McBride. Council President McBride is absent, ladies and gentlemen, I will call the quorum again, it's the top of the hour, it's six P M.
And also, I think it's important to note, and in fact, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask your opinion on this, am I, is it proper or is it allowed for me to use my first amendment rights to speak at this council meeting or at this assembly of the city council?
I mean, you, you can always speak, we addressed that when Mr. Conlon wanted to speak during the meeting at the public comment, but typically, those, you know, those statements are going to be limited to you speaking in your capacity as a sworn council, as an elected sworn councilman or.
Thank you.
During the public meeting portion, however, I must reiterate that right now, we don't have a meeting, so really, there are no rules.
Thank you, I just want to say.
Sir, I extend my discipline, and I'm gonna read to you full order, President, President pro tem, the president shall take the chair at the hour appointed for the meeting, and so immediately call the council president in the absence of the vice president.
Can we get that muted?
In the absence of the council president, of the vice president, the clerks are called to council to order, once again, the clerk shall call the council to order.
Let's, let's, let's.
And in that event, the call for the election of a temporary president, upon the arrival of the council president or council vice president, the temporary president shall relinquish the chair upon the conclusion of the business.
I appreciate that respectfully, respectfully to everyone on the call, respectfully to. I appreciate that respectfully to every, respectfully to everyone on the call, respectfully to.
At such meeting, shall be recorded.
You keep muting Michelle out.
Something. Number one, we do not have.
Excuse me, everyone. I just want to make a notation that Councilman Michelle is on the call. He keeps getting muted somehow, but Councilman Michelle is on the call.
The worst council ever. It is literally the worst council ever. I, it's just outrageous. We can't do the people's business because at least a majority are refusing to show up.
Mr. Michelle, you're not muted. Um, I'm not sure who's been muting you, but it, your, your, your microphone is live.
Well, thank you. I, I, every time I talk, they mute me out.
I think it's just everyone overpowering your, your microphone, sir.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. We are literally paid to show up to meetings like this. This is why we're paid. This is why we were elected. People are up. It's crazy. And listen, don't get upset with Councilman Blakely for, uh, calling a thing what it is. The fact of the matter is, I wouldn't be talking right now if we had a quorum on this call. We should be done by now. People should be able to enjoy their New Year's Eve. But instead, we're here waiting for my colleagues to show up. It is shameful. You may need to get some water for that.
Who are you speaking to, sir?
Whoever was clearing their throat. Worst council ever. Worst council in the history of the world.
Ladies and gentlemen, the hour has timed six PM. I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
I'm here.
Mr. Blakely is present. Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Ms. Caldwell Wilson is absent.
Shame, shame, shame. Shameful, shame.
Please, sir, please do not, sir, please stop interrupting the roll. Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michelle.
Present. Do you hear me?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
Shame.
Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is absent. Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn.
Shame.
Ms. Vaughn is absent. Sir, please stop interrupting the roll. I, I really, I, I really, it, it, please.
Gentlemen, can we just get this done, please?
Council President McBride.
Super shameful.
Council President McBride.
Super shameful.
Please mute him. Thank you. Council President McBride. Shame. I'm just calling it what it is. Council President McBride is absent. Okay, gentlemen, um, we can either, we can either unanimously consent to, uh, it has to be unanimous, but, uh, would you like to point the other power and tell? Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm reading the section under quorum under rule eight, and I realize it talks about setting a new date now. I don't know where this came from. That, that would totally violate the Open Public Meetings Act, to my estimation. The best that we could do right now is this meeting is out of the quorum. There is no meeting, and whatever meeting will be rescheduled will have to be subject to local city, uh, public meetings notice requirements. We can't just scatter it like it's something on the record now, obviously. I realize it's in our code. I don't know how long it's been there or how it's out there. I don't know what Mr. Bridges' position is. I think it would be a, a major.
Mr. Koloji, we can't, we can't address that date now. In reality, it's Tuesday, so we can address, we can address them on Tuesday.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I go into adjourned this meeting as of six, oh, PM.
Yeah, there is no meeting again. We don't have a quorum. However, I see that the mayor has his hand up. He'd like to read his statement. I believe that he has the right to make a statement because there is no meeting, and this is a free for all, so if we could have the mayor say what he'd like to say, that would be appreciated.
Oh, please, also include Kathy McBride, uh, as well, because she also.
Elizabeth, could you, um, could you mute everyone?
Listen, she's not on council.
Oh, Jared Blakely, you're not on council either, you jerk.
Can we mute everybody on this call except the mayor, please? I, too, I would. Let's mute.
Uh, mayor, please unmute yourself. You're the only one who, uh.
Thanks so much. Um, I hope everyone has a, uh, safe holiday and, uh, is adhering to COVID, uh, restrictions. Uh, my biggest concern is, actually, two years ago, we were here, uh, when we had to transfer funds to make sure that the first year payroll was met. And council did in fact meet. Council did in fact meet, and everybody was on the same page. In fact, on the, uh, uh, December twenty-third docket, uh, we were going to do the exact, uh, uh, agenda that is on tonight, and then there were other things. Um, it is a shame that, uh, council, uh, does not take this seriously. I do want to commend, uh, Councilman Blakely, Councilman Harrison, and Councilman Michelle, uh, for being on the ready and looking out for the city employees. Therefore, on this date, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, I'm issuing an executive order for the city of Trenton for the issuance of paychecks to the employees of the city of Trenton. Whereas the city of Trenton has multiple collective bargaining agreements that define salaries and benefits for employees of the city of Trenton, and whereas the employees of the city of Trenton expose themselves to risk on a daily basis to protect our citizens and maintain daily government operations, and whereas it would be improper under New Jersey's wage and hour laws and fundamentally unfair for city council to withhold our employee salary on the dawn of a new year, and whereas city council previously canceled a duly advertised meeting on December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, without providing an alternative date to address various end year matters, including, but not limited to, certain assurances that city workers would be paid, and whereas the Department of Finance must receive approval, approved transfers for the year end so that none of the payroll accounts will overexpend when payroll is posted on the payroll ending date of January first, twenty-twenty-two, and transfers are also needed to prevent other account over expenditures at year end. And whereas payroll must be submitted no later than Tuesday at twelve PM to the city's payroll provider in order to timely issue paychecks to the city employees, thereby making it not possible for council to meet this deadline at their next scheduled council meeting. Now, therefore, I hereby declare an order as the chief executive officer and duly elected mayor of the city of Trenton, through this executive order that the business administrator and the chief financial officer take all necessary actions to fund and pay all employees of the city of Trenton as obligated by collective bargaining agreements and by law, by Mayor W. Reed Gussiora, executed on this thirty-first day of December twenty-twenty-one, and I will be distributing to the public and to the press.
Now, Your Honor, you were offered a special meeting for the purposes.
Thanks, sir.
Ah, you're not talking. Mute him as yet.
Conlon, have some respect.
You have.
Mr. Conlon, you have duty to be impartial. This is not your, please vacate. Thank you for muting him. He is, it's, he, I think he's converted to a campaign manager of some sort, um, and is not looking out for the best interests of the city. Um, and I think you should have a lot more respect for the elected officials, including Mr. Blakely and Mr. Harrison and Mr. Michelle. So God bless everybody. Have a safe New Year's, and we'll see you next year. Thank you very much.